Okay, welcome back to the special meeting with council. The date is May 6th, 2025, time is 7:13. We have just put our closed portion of the meeting on recess until later in the evening. There is nothing to report out at this time. With that, I'll call the open portion of the meeting to order. And motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
It moved by councillor Bowden, seconded by councillor Abbott. Any amendments, changes?
No.
No? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, with that, we'll move to public participation. Anyone in the gallery like to speak? No? Anyone online? Please raise your virtual hand. Okay, Joe Martin. Okay, with that, I'll move to item number seven, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the special meeting of council minutes from April 1st? Moved by councillor Bowden, seconded by councillor Cunliffe. Any amendments, comments? Councillor Cunliffe.
I just one went on page six, under eight point one point two, where we have in the budget section reading a reference to vegetation management. Be reduced from $140,000 to $60,000, and I was not aware that we were referring to. These were slated in the action log on page 21 as still danger trees. Now they're being referred to as vegetation management, and I'm not sure that that's accurate with the timing.
Okay, yeah, it's impressive that name change. I can adjust the action log as far as discussions go with the whole council.
Sorry, do you want to speak? I can't hear you.
Can't hear you, yeah.
So through the discussions with committee, the whole and council, it's been adjusted down to the amount except for danger trees. The line item was just referred to as vegetation management. There's an extra $4,000 in there for other regular meetings.
I was aware of the change of name. I'm just not sure that it was actually there for at this timeline, this timeframe in April.
And. Oh, I'm not quite sure. I can double check that, but vegetation management. Okay, councillor Abbott?
Sorry, why have we changed the name to vegetation management? That's just really confusing. We were always talking about danger trees. The workshop does vegetation management. There were a staff person that does that, so they wouldn't be asking for budget for vegetation management. Why did we decide to change it?
It's my understanding that we wouldn't be committing to spending this money here until there was this sort of budget tree identified. You have to incur the funds and make them up beyond vegetation management would be going to council. This was just an optics. Okay, so we've got a question about whether it's vegetation management or hazardous trees, I think. And do we need to check the minutes?
Danger trees is always the word we use, I certainly recall this.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Councillor Bowden. Through the chair. I'm just wondering if, if for clarification, vegetation management, if that's the line item currently brackets and or including danger trees could be added to that or bracketed. I don't know, just to to move this along. My, I was going to comment on this item as well, but from a slightly different perspective, I actually moved this this motion and in order to move the budget forward because we seem to be stuck on on the amount and whether whether it would be in fact be used for danger trees. So just wanted to be very clear that that while I support us having adequate funds to to deal with with keeping the village safe and residents safe. The reason I moved that motion was was to move forward. Otherwise, it appeared that we were not going to, we were going to delay the budget yet again, so.
Okay, council, how about if we put either forward slash dangerous trees or we put in brackets dangerous trees?
Something to that effect, sounds fine.
Okay, could we add after management, vegetation management in brackets, dangerous trees or councillor Bowden, you made that motion, what was it? If you recall.
I think I said vegetation management, including danger trees, was my first comment. I then talked about bracketing, but I think the first comment would cover.
Including dangerous trees.
Including dangerous trees.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend that? Okay, second, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other items?
Sorry if I could, just for the recorder, if you could state the mover and the seconder.
Moved by councillor Bowden, seconded by councillor Cunliffe. Okay, any other amendments to the April 1st?
A quick item. Okay, actually, two items that I think might be more appropriate to come up as business arising from the minutes, but I could I could deal with them quickly right now. That's just pleasure.
We didn't look up away.
Sorry?
I mean, after business arising as well, it's just a few minutes, please.
Right, okay. Okay, well, that's similar to the item that we just discussed. I mean, it could be could be discussing here, but I'll bring them up under business arising. There'll be item number six and item number eight, one, two.
Okay, any other amendments with that? I'll call a question, all in favor.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carried. A motion.
Simple.
Motion to approve the April 9th, 2025, moved by councillor Bowden, seconded by councillor Abbott. Any amendments?
Yeah, I I have one. I think I had one. On page 11 says the special meeting was adjourned at 6:13. This is the meeting. I'm sorry, page 10, there's a special item meeting adjourned at 6:04 and reconvened at 6:12. So I don't think you can adjourn at 6:04 and reconvene at 6:12. I think it was recessed at 6:04, correct?
That sounds right.
Yeah. And then we reconvened at 6:12.
Okay, any other amendments?
Sorry, the meeting was adjourned at 6:13. Okay, that makes sense. Who am I changing that to recess, I think?
Okay. Any other amendments? No? Call a question, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes, motion carried. We'll go to okay, motion to approve the special meeting of April 23rd, 2025. Mover, moved councillor Abbott, seconded by councillor Bowden. Any amendments, adjustments?
Nope, I'm good.
Question.
I have one. The reporting out of close. We had agreed to make the report available to the village website. And we also, that was a three to one vote, opposed by councillor Abbott. And all our other motions, we documented as opposed, so I would add that, my
So you will, Kim?
That would be right at the beginning of number three on page 14. And I added, Mr. Chirkoff, the motion which I read word for word. Okay, any other amendments? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move to business arising. Councillor Bowden?
Okay, page five, item six, business arising, business arising from the minutes from the previous meeting. Councillor Bowden queried how the water metering grant item discussed during the March 18th regular meeting of council closed session was released to the public in the village update on March 21st. And the response from Mr. Blackwell was that the item was released because it was no longer qualified as a closed discussion as the province had changed their position. And my concern at that time, it continues to be that council determined that there was there was a closed meeting, that there were certain items to be discussed in close, not all of which related directly to the water metering grant item. And so I felt that it was inappropriate for staff to to release information that was previously in closed session and that in fact sought out permission to do so from the ministry, which which I'm unclear on that. And I think that it was not not helpful to the community to, I think there was a mistake in impression given regarding why council had or had not completed that item. And during a during a time when this, when the 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 community is quite divided, that was very, I found very unhelpful. So I was particularly concerned that that the way I found out about the fact that the item had been released from open was in the village update and that other councils apparently were aware on the Wednesday when when and I was not aware, I could have been aware earlier Friday apparently, but I was involved in a personal matter which I had informed council of, all council of. So anyway, I'm 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 just quite concerned that this this the ship has sailed, but I just would not want to see a similar situation happen again because I think it really was not helpful. There was incorrect information provided to the community, apparently based on on the concerns that I heard from people in terms of my position or my concerns or why things were not going forward. So I didn't feel that was that was helpful at all, and it ended up involving a lot of people for 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 no useful purpose. So I just would not want to to see that occur again. Second item was regarding the next item, eight point one point one, develop their development variance permit on Ocean View.
Sorry, what page is that?
I'm sorry, on page five over to six. There was a motion made by councillor Abbott, seconded by me, and I'm not challenging the 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 wording of the motion. I believe that was accurate. I think that was the motion that we did we did pass at the time. But it's but an ongoing concern that I have thus business arising from the minutes is that I think that the board of variance is is being underutilized and would really encourage staff and council to to really recognize the incredible resource that we have there. And that I think we should have a larger discussion about that. I'm not I'm not really happy to let it sit at this point. I think it it looks like it's a very narrow, the council direct staff to encourage applicants to utilize the border variance process for simple setback variance applications. And I believe that the simple setback variance applications is profoundly limiting to the benefit that we can gain from the expertise on the board of variance. So I hope that we will discuss that in the future, committee of the whole.
Councillor Abbott?
Yeah, I also had this one as it is arising. In a slightly different approach, I, as you kind of recall, we crafted this on the fly. And the simple setback very variance was over the concern of something that should not be appropriate for the border variance to look at and is more appropriate to be dealt with. In another way, such as a DVP. My thought was to actually reword this resolution now is what I was going to suggest, and I'll read it out anyway. If that's the way we want to go, so be it. If not, we could it's about this as we could do it another time. So the rewording that I came up with this time was the council direct staff to encourage applicants to utilize border various process for all variance applications that meet the criteria of the border variance. And that all applications for development purpose include a statement as to why the border variance option was not utilized. I think that is much stronger and that is what the councils, I think that's what councils wish was when we're having this discussion, that people should go to the border variance where appropriate and as a first as a first option. So I'd like to put that forward if we, if council's interested in rescinding, not rescinding, revising the past resolution.
Okay, councillor Bowden?
Just clarification. At this point in time, individuals have the option of going to the border variance or going with going the other route, going going to to staff, is that correct? And so there are, so is your motion then requiring toward the border border variance? Or strongly encouraging or maybe I missed the wording.
My my resolutions attempt to make the border variance the the first place to go if it is appropriate. Something they can manage. They, border varies are pretty clear on what they are allowed to and they should be by anyone and what they shouldn't be. So, yeah, they should go there if it's appropriate.
Councillor Abbott, before we put that forward as a motion, do we want to get to Mr. Blackwell's input or do you want to make a motion on that?
I think I read the motions. We need them on the table to discuss.
Okay, okay, moved by councillor Abbott, seconded by councillor Cunliffe. Okay, Mr. Blackwell, any comments on the motion?
Yeah, council may recall that I provided a fairly comprehensive planning and legal analysis of the different roles and functions of a border variance and a development variance permit process. These are set out by statute. These are not supposed to be taken casually or lightly. They are defined legally and they have clear and defensible functions. And my concern is council's going way down a road that it doesn't have knowledge of with resolutions like this. And so my recommendation is to ensure that you take the time to understand the full legal ramifications and context for a border variance versus a development variance permit before you make decisions that could very likely create problems for the municipality, not least of which could result in litigation for improper administrative, how would I put it? Process. So that could be a situation where a council could have the lawyer. If if that if that two pager that I provided was not sufficient, then invite a lawyer to come and provide that information to council, to committee of the whole, so you could have a fulsome understanding.
Okay, my question would be, I know later on it's going to come up about building bylaws. And we had passed the resolution at the last meeting, which was recommended by the provincial advisor, that our building bylaws needed a complete overhaul. And my comments, and they'll come up later in the building bylaws, was the minor amendments that you've made which pertain to short term rentals, does that cover off the provincial recommendations of a of a serious look at our building bylaws, which might also cover off exactly what the motion on the table is right now? Is that going to cover off the, I guess, the current motion?
That is, is that a question?
That's a question for Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Difficult answer, yes and no. There are a number of bylaws that are significantly flawed. One of them is the zoning bylaw. I brought that forward to council. You will recall a short time ago where under the single family residential zone, I pointed out that there is a sort of a fatal flaw in that zone. So there are a number of bylaws that need to be updated because they don't function as they need to. This, before council, later in the agenda, are minor tweaks. I asked Liddstone to take a look at this because I was concerned that some of the scope was ultra virus beyond the legal authority of the municipality. They confirmed that was the case and undertook the work that you see before you tonight, but that's only one tiny slice of a more comprehensive update of just that one bylaw.
Okay, so my question is, should we be looking at the updating the the building bylaws, which would include the border variance and this current motion on the table? Or are we gonna are we gonna piecemeal this? Ross, we we passed the resolution and that that was published. You weren't at that meeting, but it covers all the provincial recommendations.
Yeah, so to answer your question, the function of a border variance and the function of a development permit, various permit process is set out under part 14 of the local government act. Municipalities cannot deviate from that. So I don't personally perceive any deficiency with respect to either the border variance bylaw per se or the the DVP process. It's certainly not a, to the extent that there's always room to fine tune. There's nothing fatal in the the architecture of both of those that warrant attention. Any in the near future, there are far bigger and more important issues relative to bylaw updates than fine tuning these. They work fine.
Hey, councillor Abbott, get your hand up.
Just speak to this resolution that I crafted on my own on the weekend. Then I had read the two pages or seven pages was the report you sent, Ross. I am aware of that. I purposely tried to not write anything here that didn't allow for all of that to be taken into account. The reason this came up and the concern was is the council wanted to encourage the use of the border areas where possible. And that hasn't happened for a while. I'm not the expert and I'm not trying to prescribe what those terms are, and that's why I said, you know, where appropriate. But we want, what we wanted to do was go back to encouraging people to use the border areas because we believe it's the best tool. They understand the village, they understand neighbors' concerns, they've got a lot of experience in that. And I think they're a very proactive tool to get easy things, I didn't use the word simple this time, resolved. So that's what we're trying to do here. Not, you know, there was no intention in this to in any way try dictate something different to local government act or any other statutes. That's why it was worded the way it is. So it's that encouragement or that we 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 believe you believe it's appropriate, that you're encouraged to go to the border variance. Because we feel that's not what's not what's happening anymore.
Okay, any other comments from the floor, councillor Bowden?
I I think that there can be perception that that having a a border variance is yet another level of hoops or something that people may may have to to jump over. But but I think the border variances work very effectively for for decades really within the community because the individuals, you know, live closely within the community, understand the community and typically will make really sound recommendations and suggestions and bring solutions that sometimes people have have not considered. And and so versus it sort of being a more, you know, paper application which which meets the legal requirements. I think it 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 really adds, there's a there's a real benefit to it. I don't think any member of council is looking to to make it more difficult for for an individual. In fact, we're quite the opposite. We're trying to bring more more resources to there to find solutions. So I just, you know, I think we all feel, I can't speak for everyone else, but certainly my my feeling is is that this thing is worked worked quite well. I don't see reasons to make it split more more directly administrative, if not, if it's not. Continue to have the opportunity to to opt to not use it, is my understanding. So and and keeping in mind that that it is an advisory, they make recommendations to councils.
Okay.
As I understand it, that and
Okay, thanks for that. Prior to calling the question, I'll get councillor Abbott to read the motion.
If I could, if I could just clarify.
I heard it's head shaking.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell?
I think, you know, the board of areas does not make recommendations. Their decision is final. So council will not see those. The other thing is with, so so there's nothing that's compromised the ability for a person to utilize the border variance. The border variance serves a function and there's no intent to change that. It's just ensuring that the scope of of a border variance versus a development very variance permit is clarified because it's pretty vague and it it oscillates and it shouldn't. It should be clear. Applicants, staff, applicants should understand clearly when a matter sits with a border variance when it doesn't. And as set out in that document I provided to council, it's primarily around issues of hardship, right? And and that's been defined and which is things like there's a physical encumbrance to being able to build on a property that's that's insurmountable. That would be a hardship, but just because somebody wants to have a slightly larger building, et cetera, that's not a hardship. It doesn't qualify. So those statutes are set out for these reasons. I didn't make them up. But certainly I would just want to emphasize that it's certainly not my intention to diminish the role of the board of variance. It's to clarify and properly structure the rules to properly serve the community.
Okay, before we call a question, councillor Abbott, you want to read the motion one more time or are you choosing to withdraw?
I'll read one more time. The council direct staff to encourage applicants to utilize the border various process for all variances, various applications that meet the criteria for border variance and that all applications for development permits include a statement that, a statement as to why border various option was not utilized.
Okay, call a question, all in favor?
Yes. I'm sorry. Before we call the question, I'm very comfortable with the motion until it gets to the giving a reason why it was not.
Thought you were gonna say that.
Yeah. So I would, could I, could I make a, I don't know if it's a friendly amendment or just an amendment, but that we that you strike the last sentence, piece of that sentence? Because I I don't don't believe it's, if you've encouraged somebody to do it, they've chosen not to. Or they or they've used the other process. I don't think they need to justify why they've done so. That's not not required, not necessary.
Okay.
I would have to, I tend to agree with Mike.
Yeah.
Do you take it all of it out? Or what if it changes it to say include a statement if the border variance option was considered?
I'm sorry.
Change it to if, instead of include a statement why the border various option was not utilized to make it include a statement if the border variance option was considered.
You're asked to remove the action.
What do you want to take the whole thing?
I'll take the whole thing. I would be comfortable taking the whole thing, otherwise it's
Encouraging where.
It's a pleasing item which I'm not.
I'm reading the room. I'll take the last part out completely.
Yeah, okay, so I would.
So it ends at applications that meet the criteria for border variance and applications that meet the criti- criteria for border variance and they end that part completely gone.
Okay. I can support it at that point.
Okay, all in favor? What's the amendment?
Yeah.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, any other items on business arising?
Um, on, sorry, which, we we still on the first set of minutes left, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, uh, yeah, okay. So I saw all I've got for that set of minutes.
Hey, any other items?
We've got some business arising in the next set of minutes. On.
April the ninth.
April the ninth. Yeah, page fourteen.
Page nine.
Page fourteen. That's the twenty-third.
That's the twenty-third.
Okay. I went nothing on the ninth.
Okay. Nothing on twenty-third?
The twenty-third of it, yeah. Okay. Um. So this is the reporting out of um our closed meeting, can you refer to earlier? Um, and that I voted against, but I got, I've got a few, few comments. Um, that I'd like to just make, um, largely around the timing of some of these things. Which was one of my major concerns. Item number one says, and maybe the the CIO can comment on whether he thinks these are doable. Um, item number one is receive review, receive and approve the twenty twenty-four audit by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, can we get a status update on the twenty twenty-three audits? And can we understand whether it's feasible to do the twenty twenty-four one in the next eight weeks? This will, have we, have we, have we passed the twenty twenty-three audit? It's the first question.
Ross, we passed the motion. You you may or may not have seen it. Uh, well, you did because I sent it to you.
Yeah.
And it was, it was published. So uh, Counselor Abbott is asking you about the item number one. Review, receive and approve the twenty twenty-four audit by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So thank you. Uh, perhaps the best person to address this because he deals with the auditor directly would be Mr. Chirkoff.
Hey, Mr. Chirkoff.
Sure. Um, so we are, we finished the twenty twenty-three audits and March eighteenth. We're still waiting for some signatures come back for that and the uh, so we to file those. Uh, we also need to lodge the annual report, uh, my final response is your first occurrence.
So the twenty twenty-three audit hasn't been signed yet.
Uh, my senior signature from uh the mayor.
So all all requires the signature.
Yeah, so I can lodge it with the L T.
Okay.
You've been in this status for over a month now. The mayor, could you could you answer the question? Are you going to sign all?
I have no problem signing that off.
Okay. You're gonna have to do for a while. Okay.
I'll sign it tomorrow. Not a problem.
Thank you.
And then as far as that twenty twenty-four, I'm not sure where um the, uh, I I wasn't a part of representation on the province. I definitely five is the goal, is our statutory deadline. Um, where we're at in regards to that, we finished off the twenty twenty-three audit about a month and a half ago. We're closing off December year end and recognize some accounts. Um, and we are working with them at P to for when they can start if their business kind of year end. Because we are late, we were planning to have this done in December of last year, kind of off their timeline, so it may not be feasible. Uh, I will sign off by June thirty, twenty-five. I will ask if we can somehow and expedite it or get ahead in line to start work. Uh, however, I don't have a firm answer for you at this moment.
Sorry, if I could, uh, just a finer point, I think it's highly unlikely that it will meet that deadline. Uh, when we retain this new auditor, we certainly had the conversation about the twenty twenty-three audit and the importance of piggybacking onto that, the work associated with the twenty twenty-four audit. So they were at that time aware that we wanted to move on it ASAP. So that's on their radar. But at this point, um, I don't think it's, it's at all possible to complete it within the deadline.
So I think would you estimate it would be completed?
If I may, yeah, Mr. Chirkoff, um, I will come back to council um through an email after discussing with um our audit partner. Um, but uh, where we slot in, uh, confirming where we slot in and what realistic deadline would be. Uh, so that uh you are appraised of our current status. Okay, Counselor Broden?
Um, I'm just wondering if if you could uh ask, ask them based on the fact that we would we're we're quite motivated to meet meet the deadline and to to meet deadlines, having not met deadlines previously. If anything they could do, I think would be very much appreciated to to try to get us back on track.
Um, I can definitely carry that and.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, and any other items?
Uh, yeah, I'm still, thanks. If I can carry on. Um, item number two, this is what I tried to point out before that is almost certainly impossible. Um, it says to publish the twenty twenty-five annual report by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. First of all, the year has to be over before you can do the annual report. Um, excepting of that, and I tried to raise this before, but no one was listening, excepting that's a typo and it should be published the twenty twenty-four annual report by that date, I'm assuming. Um, once again, it needs the uh audit done, so we've just been told that it's gonna slip. Um, can we get the twenty twenty-three annual report done by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which will be one year late? Um, where do we at on those ones?
I can answer that.
Chirkoff? Or Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you, and whatever I don't cut off, co- cover off, um, please, Mr. Chirkoff, jump in on. Uh, so council will recall a a year-end review. That was provided to council that highlighted some of the successes. That was the foundational content for the annual report. So um, it's, it's, it's it's significantly completed. Um, that we should absolutely be able to hit that that timeline. Uh, I'm not up to date with regard to uh Mr. Chirkoff receiving all of the information. I understand Mr. Burr forwarded some information recently, uh, so I'll defer to Joe on 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 what's lacking and and how far out.
So can you just be clear, what year are we talking about?
I may, yeah, Mr. Chirkoff. So um, to clarify for you, uh, Counselor Abbott. Um, the year-end review was for the year that twenty twenty-four, it was current information. Uh, we're kind of backfill twenty twenty-three.
So we haven't started twenty twenty-three?
We have started, it's substantially complete, then I will be distributing to council for their review. Um, basically the first part of it, which with um this influential committees and it's sort of like council strateg- strategics or yeah, and direction. Um, I don't expect there to be a kind of change from what's in there in a few years here, because you have not have strategic meetings. Um, so he will be treated, um, I would say this week for your review. Um, this should go through the CIO first. Uh, I have received input from FIRE, from bylaw, and uh from Mary. Yes, that's, and she's also taken on reporting for E O C in the absence of a P P C program mention. And um, uh, and all the stats are updated already. So you'll have a document review. And when you're comfortable with it, it can be published for the fourteen-day viewing period by November.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, uh, are we gonna try to do twenty twenty-three in advance or twenty twenty-four?
Of course, yes, yes.
Okay. Um. Item, I just wanted to draw your attention to item ten. Um, which was, this re- it says reinforce commitment to provide irrational good faith written reasons for majority of policy decisions, including by considering professional sex and other reports to council on policy matters. Um, I think it was explained to us in that meeting, what this really meant was every decision the council makes should have a written report that supports it. Um, I think that's one, one area that we we frequently, you know, fall down and uh we can all hold ourselves to do better. Yeah.
Hey, any other items?
And yeah, I just have one other one, I guess. Um, on the page fifteen, section six point one. Um, that motion there is did not happen is not going to happen. Um, staff review, the delegation reported requesting comeback with recommendations for the next committee of the whole meeting on May sixth. This is um, Mary Brown and Rule Curtis, Restructuring Emergency Services. Um, what uh where do we have to say, what's the staff's position? What should we be doing with that statement?
Uh, Mr. Blackwell, did you want to comment or do you want me to jump in?
Please feel free and I'm happy to jump in where you need.
Okay, uh, from my perspective, uh, we, at the metro level, we saw the boards of metro approve a business case study which involves uh the small community CAOs, which is Mr. Blackwell and the metro staff uh to opine on the business case of uh allowing the regional district to assume many of the responsibilities which the small communities uh are currently legislated to perform, uh, however, don't have the resources. So metro uh passed that resolution at the recent uh L G M uh LA, uh up in Whistler, I think I've got the acronym wrong. Yeah, thank you. Uh, they also approved a resolution uh instructing the province to change the legislation, allow regional districts such as metro to assume many of the activities of uh emergency response. So uh, my particular concern would be uh, I would like to see our staff meet with metro and uh decipher what exactly they can help us with. Uh, before we uh enlist uh volunteers and we uh make undue promises. Uh, so that's my feedback from the uh metro meetings and also the uh the lower mainland municipal meetings. Mr. Blackwell?
Uh, you covered it pretty well. The only filler bits I could add is that ideally we could hand over all of the functions uh to both metro and hopefully North Shore Emergency Management. Metro to to manage all four phases of emergency management and uh North Shore to look after E S S. What this then does is is built, build in um resiliency and avoids vulnerabilities associated with uh the ebbing and flowing of volunteers. Um, yeah, for instance, um, you know, Mary has been um pretty darn committed and devoted to the work associated with E S S. Uh, and I think she would agree that uh, you know, even with that level of cr- commitment, there's the end of the runway at some point. And and the question then becomes, is there anybody um willing to step into that role? Sometimes it can be yes. Sometimes no. Uh, if we're able to achieve this, it builds in that resiliency. Uh, so that they would sort of manage that full function. And hopefully, uh, it would also be my expectation that they would cultivate volunteerism around supporting particularly E S S function and and maybe other volunteer roles with regard to emergency management. But all of those details are to be fleshed out.
Okay, um, any other comments?
No.
Oh, okay, I'll just comment on uh Counselor Abbott's uh recap of the uh resolution uh that the provincial advisors asked us to incorporate. I'll just comment that uh the provincial advisors gave us those recommendations in August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, a year and a half ago. If council had have acted on those resolutions, uh, perhaps we would have made some of these uh dates that we're now extending. Uh, but on a positive note, I think council in a three-to-one decision. Uh, Counselor Abbott opposed uh did decide to move forward on the provincial recommendations. Uh, so we can take that as a uh vote of confidence and we also will report uh to the inspector of municipalities, which requested uh a date that we would uh also adopt these these uh, the these recommendations. So I think that's a positive and and if we can just focus on that, uh, hopefully we'll move forward and get some of these actions incorporated. Okay, any other items and unfinished business? No, okay, we'll move forward. Okay, we'll move to the action log, the page twenty. Uh, is there any items on page twenty? Uh, the council would like to withdraw and discuss, get an update.
Um, I mentioned item three twenty-one, we have a meeting, so I might as well ask if there's been any progress. C I O.
That is the staff to investigate whether the Village of Lions Bay can apply for grants and funding as a rural community. Uh, over to you, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, through you to Counselor Abbott. I'm desperate to give you some traction on this. Uh, however, I just um, just cannot squeeze it into my uh limited workday. But it is a priority. I know that it's a pressing issue, uh, and it had doesn't shift off of my priority list. But as you can tell, I'm sure from the volume of emails you get from me, there's so many other directions I'm pulled. So as soon as I possibly can, um, I will be actioning this in some way, shape or form.
Okay, any other items?
Um. Sorry, I highlighted one of the, one second. No.
No, any other items, Counselors, Counselor Broden?
Well, I'll just um noting from some of the uh correspondence of the three thirty-seven. I think it's been completed. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, they're indicated that's complete. They're fine. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, no other items? Okay.
Because they're hanging on, as explained in the last meeting, we're left on for one more meeting.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll move to uh reports and the twenty twenty-five uh budget for adoption. Mr. Chirkoff, uh, the recommendation is that the twenty twenty-five budget be adopted as presented. Do we have motion for that? So moved by Counselor Broden, seconded by Counselor Canleth, discussion.
Yeah, I mean.
Counselor Abbott?
Um. I have several um concerns about this budget, as you've known, and I just want to point out to everyone, we've got a A P report, counts. Um. It's called A P central counts. I can't remember the A P central now.
Council table.
Count payable, thank you. Count payable report, yeah, it's a bit of a too long. Um, in this, in in that report, we've noted we've paid fifty-four thousand dollars so far this year on legal fees, which is ninety percent of the budget we approved. Um, council were trying hard to get, bring down the legal fees. We are certainly not, and we would seem that given that we're going with um, these matters, that's it's gonna go well past the budget we asked, we approved. Um, and a lot of those costs are by cost created by internal council workings and staff logistics. So I, you know, that's one of the reasons why I I have an issue um proving this. I have a bigger issue with um the danger trees which I kept uh pushing against and the fact that we've done that, I think that is a very bad precedent that we're setting there. Um, I fully agree, if there's an imminent danger on a tree, that it should be removed. So as much as cause it harm, that is not how that money's been utilized, in my opinion. Um, and every, this particular council, um everyone that ran on their platforms and every year we keep talking about the emphasis on cost savings. But I feel that we we just never get to that part. And when you look at the true operational cost, or you can say things. Um, I also just question for for the financial officer, Joe. Um, you mentioned it earlier, now we still have preliminary data um, for twenty twenty-four in the budget. Um, so there's, there's still information that that we haven't gathered since the end of the year.
I'll take the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we reconciled to this on the first, I can definitely find the actuals at this point.
The actuals in the report is still reporting.
Yeah, so we haven't updated that report then because we're focusing on the twenty twenty five data.
So you have actuals now that just one report we're looking at.
Okay. All right, any other comments, Counsel Abbott? Okay, I've got a comment. Counsel Abbott has brought up the exorbitant expenditures on legal. I'd be prepared to make a motion that we report out to the public on what exactly those legal expenses are. Because I think if you can, perhaps you can give us a little bit of detail on what those legal expenses refer to. My understanding is they're respectful workplace issues.
If I make it the chair, I would defer to Mr. Blackwell with regards to these items. I'm not privy to all of the legal.
Okay, well, Mr. Blackwell, if you want to comment or I can make a motion that council discloses what those expenses are for.
I can speak in general terms. There have been a series of actions brought against the municipality that it's had to defend. So that's added cost and the municipality is currently involved in multiple actions, legal actions. So that takes legal time. As you alluded, there was an internal process, respectful workplace process that consumed a significant amount of that budget. The actual day to day operational aspects, you know, a question about X or Y, you know, in terms of daily operations comprises very little of the legal the legal budget that you see before you now. Most is driven by those 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 other realms of litigation and the respectful workplace matter.
Okay, Counsel Broden?
My understanding is that while the village has been has received letters and various legal notifications that those have not generated much in the way of cost. And in fact, I believe our village council in a discussion indicated that was maybe ten, somewhere around ten percent of the of his billing. So I think it's it's challenging to to provide this information without without a a motion to to release the the data.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to for staff to release that data to the public. And do we have a second? Second, okay, seconded discussion?
I can only say we just had a meeting with our legal counsel who is pursuing a matter that he's bringing back to council. And until such time as we have received that, I am not willing to make any discussion or release any information on legal matters pertaining to the village of Lions Bay.
Okay, Counsel Abbott, you brought up about the exorbitant legal expenses. Any comments?
My suggestion was for for counsel to consider how we can curtail these ongoing legal costs.
Okay, well, good enough. All right, we've got a motion on the table. I'm going to call a question as I think the public deserves to have more clarity on where these expenses are. So I'll call the question. All in favor?
I.
I opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, noted that Counsel Abbott and the mayor voted in favor of disclosing. Okay, sorry, Counsel Broden and the mayor voted in favor of disclosing the legal expenses. Counselor Conleth, Counselor Abbott voted opposed. So motion defeated. Okay, any other items? In regards to the budget or should we hear from Mr. Cherkov?
So there has been no change since our last meeting. All feedback from council has been incorporated in the new budgets and we pass it for a third reading last time. So the recommendation or request from staff is to read it for a fourth time.
Okay, Counsel Broden?
If I could make a comment, my initial concern was that based on the fact that we had a quite a high increase last year, I encouraged council to consider a three percent increase this year and ultimately accepted that that we continue with a five percent increase in order to move forward. I I continue to be very concerned. We're currently in the climate where no people are not sure. We had our our prime minister meet with the President of the United States today. It'd be very interesting to see what the outcome may be there. But we are in a profoundly economically challenging climate. We have people on fixed incomes or living off portfolios which have been harmed. We have a large component of people in Lions Bay are actively involved in the motion pitcher industry and it's appears to be under threat, although that's was was a item on Sunday and not an item on Monday. So all all to say that we're in a very erratic environment. We're not sure what the what terrorists are going to look like. We fortunately have had some expenditures. We anticipated significant expenditures on bridges which appear don't appear to to are going to be as major problem as we had considered previously. So anyway, I just think we really need to be be very cognizant of of the environment that we're operating in and really try to keep keep our taxes as low as possible and picking up on Counsel Abbott's point, really looking at operation costs. One, one percent of our of our tax increase, or pardon me, yeah, one percent tax increases, seventeen thousand something, Joe? Approximately seventeen thousand dollars. So it doesn't take too many significant, you know, what what we considered small expenditures, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollar expenditure. And that's a two to three percent tax increase that we have to deal with. So we really do need to be cognizant of that. Okay, so with that, I do support. I support the budget. I'm anxious to move forward with the budget. As as I said earlier this evening, I was prepared to put forward the motion to adjust the the danger trees budget in order to to get get agreement of council.
So, okay, any other comments? No, I'll call a question. All in favor?
I.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, motion carried, noted, Counsel Abbott proposed. Okay, next item. Sorry.
So if I could? Yeah, just just a note to council. What would really help staff for for next year is if if council would participate in some sort of, it's certainly not a strategic planning session at this point anymore. But let's call it a strategic priority setting. And if if we can agree to sit down to talk about council priorities over the next twelve months, it will certainly help shape where the budget lead up goes. I mean, I've I've heard council talk about, you know, operational efficiencies, which I completely agree with. And you've heard me talk about moving the community to a greater financial sustainability footing. These conversations need to happen. Otherwise, it's it's going to be too sort of ad hoc. And I my perception is that there might be this feeling with council right now that part of this budget feels a little bit too ad hockey and less strategic or not as strategic as council would would like like it to be ideally. So circling back, if there could be some commitment to sit down and set some priorities for the next twelve months, it would really help in this process.
All right, thank you for those comments. Okay, item ten point one point two, first quarter accounts payable report, Mr. Cherkov?
I provided, I apologize on behalf of our team that it was generated in a manner that had two screens. So I divided to council an electronic version and a formatted version of the AP for your check payments for the first quarter for your review. If there are any items in particular that you'd like me to follow up with in the court of council, I'd be happy to do so. I mean, but I have to answer questions.
Okay, any questions, comments before we receive? From Counsel Abbott?
Page fifty one, Joe, first of what on the page, there's three line items together. One says EOC and ESS services. The other one says EOC honoraryum. The third one says ESS honoraryum. These are all meant to be ESS honoraryum. EOC doesn't get honoraryum. So I think that's just a right captured. Yeah, so just we can just. And then I just had a comment on, you've asked this before. So if you look at the top of the next page, is the fire department Christmas party? Now, and I've sent you an email as my understanding is there's a separate account for the fire department. Yes, you have liberty to spend because monies that arrange as fun fundraising. And I believe this is one of the items they spend it on. And but it's not, it's difficult to tell or you can't tell which items are coming out of the fundraising fund and which items are taxpayers paid. Can we just put a little comment behind it or records fundraised or something in that description? So if you look in these reports or residents are looking at these reports, they understand that some of the what we'd be seen as nice to have for the fire department guys is not actually coming out of taxpayers' money. It's a good discussion. Okay. And yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll move right down to bylaws, item number twelve, zoning and development bylaw. Recommendations that the zoning development bylaw, number five, twenty twenty seventeen, number six, forty one, twenty twenty five, be read for the first and second time. Do we have a motion for that?
True.
Okay, moved by Counsel Abbott, seconded by Counsel Broden, discussion?
If I could, I was going to go first.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell, page sixty one, go ahead.
Just to preempt, so I've received some an email from a member of council expressing some, you know, questions and concerns about this. As I've mentioned earlier tonight, this is largely an administrative exercise. It was driven by some observations I had, particularly with the policy that granted authorities to the CAO that were not legal. You can't give them CAO those authorities. So I sent this over to Lidstone to take a look at to see if they felt that was correct. They did, and I said, can you please modify this to address these concerns? That is what is before you. I sent out earlier, per the request as well, marked up version of both of those. But it will be difficult for me to sort of convey what the lawyer's thinking process is or was around any of the any specific point. It's possible that I could, but it would be better to actually bring the lawyer in on a Zoom call at a committee, the whole meeting, should council want to do a deeper dive into some of the rationale that the lawyer has applied to some of these proposed changes.
Okay, any comments, Counsel Conleth?
I would prefer that. I only saw that final email later this afternoon. Didn't really get a chance to dive into it, so I would prefer.
Okay, any other? Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm good with, as as the Council of Council just said, we only got the email really late this afternoon. So I'm good with that. Looking at it another time, but just prior to doing that. Plus, I think I'm still a little confused by A, your emails and what we got told in the last meeting. And then what was written into this report, which was predated the last meeting and then what the lawyer said today. Are we going to end up with a revised policy? And this information put in the zoning bylaw or is the revised policy going to disappear? And we only have this in zoning bylaw? The answer's been answered differently on more than one occasion.
Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you. Through you to Counselor Abbott. So the long answer unfortunately is ideally with regard to a topic like this, a policy is not necessary if the bylaw is properly written. Policies are implemented in those circumstances where there's some vagueness or interpretation is necessary to convey the pits and substance of a section of a bylaw. So the expectation here is that council might be a little too wary to put all the eggs in the bylaw basket. And so the the expectation was that the policy be amended to make sure that the authorities granted to the CAO were legal and reflective of sort of legal due process. And then the bylaw, associated bylaw be updated to reflect provincial changes to shorter rentals, as well as to make sure that the policy and the bylaw speak to each other.
Okay, thank you, please.
Yeah, Counsel Abbott?
Yeah, so to my earlier question about us making decisions based on attached written information. What I tried to point out in my email to you earlier, the report says the council adopted revised short term rental policy as proposed. And then later it says policies attached and there was no policy was attached. And the reason I was told it wasn't attached is because we actually weren't, we were going to rescind it. So so to be clear, we need both both of those documents if we are to approve. So the policy should have been attached, is what you're telling us.
Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you. Through you to Counsel Rabbit. Yes, I'm not clear why it wasn't. Ideally, as I say, it would be, it would be far better if council said, look, we want this matter to be dealt with in the zoning bylaw fully, comprehensively, properly, so that we don't have to have a companion policy, do the bylaw right. And if I got that direction, that would be great. I had that conversation with Alison Espavite. You notice I didn't spell that last name. I just used Alison E. in my email. It's a tricky one to spell. And she she agreed with that. She said, yes, ideally it would be, it would be best practice to sort of consolidate it. But you know, council may not be there yet. Hence, my suggestion that maybe a committee, the whole discussion might sort of help flush out some of these questions a bit more.
All right.
Counsel Abbott? One final question. Can we add the revised policy as it was proposed? Can we add that to this agenda package so that people can see it? Because the only people that have seen it is council. It was meant to be attached, as you said, and it wasn't.
Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you through you to Counselor Abbott. Technically, I'm not sure how I can do that right now, but we will make sure that it's it's put on, is made available to the public, both are made available to the public.
Normally, we just, on the on the website, we attach and you just put a supplemental on this.
Yeah, it might be as simple as that. I'm thinking on the fly and I don't don't want to say something that's technically incorrect. So I'm just, I'll just defer to whatever we need to do technically to get it on on the website, we will do.
Good.
Okay, my comments, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Blackwell. I think we should do the bylaw right, which in my perspective includes the provincial advisor's input. I know Randy Deal had provided the various emails. So I think maybe we need to forward those to you if you haven't seen them, Mr. Blackwell. I think we should get legal counsel feedback. And I also think we should be including our building inspectors' feedback and perhaps have him at the meeting to give some input. But the bottom line was our last resolution, which was just approved to accept the provincial recommendations, included the update to the building bylaw and the zoning bylaw. So I think rather than piecemeal it, we should get the input from the various groups. So I would recommend that staff come back to council, Mr. Broden, or Counsel Broden?
Yeah, I would support that. We received the the modified version that, you know, for for something. Yeah, um, I I would support that. I we received the the modified version that, you know, for for something this afternoon. So I I did quickly look at it, but I have not dealt with it in depth. I think it does need to come back and it does. And and from what I'm hearing, uh, C A O Blackwell say, it, I I think doing it once right might be a more efficient way of doing it rather than changing the changing the bylaw, kind of having a policy, kind of explaining the bylaw and so on. So I I think we've got, we've got lots, lots of bylaw work to do. Um, and and I think we had some, uh, an offer of some assistance from our, from our, uh, legal counsel. If memory serves me, so that's a different discussion, but but I think, uh, it may take us on as a project.
Okay, all in favor of referring this back to, uh, staff? Opposed, motion carried.
Sorry, if I may.
Yeah. Mr. Blackwell?
Did did you mean to refer it, uh, to committee of the hall?
Yes, I agree so.
Refer to committee of the hall, but if you could include the feedback from provincial advisor, legal counsel, building inspector, that would be helpful.
Sure. Can I also interpret that? I mean, I would suggest this is, this is the worth the the uh at one hour you would spend on having Alison attended by Zoom. Uh, can we, uh, can, would council be open to inviting the author of this to participate for an hour? To to walk through these issues, hear from council, their concerns and so on and so forth, because they're going to be crafting this.
Yes, if we could include, uh, if maybe they could see the provincial advisors input and even have some input from the building inspector, I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll move to the next item, water rates and regulation bylaw. So the motion is that the water rates and regulation bylaw, number two, nineteen seventy one amendment bylaw, six four two uh, twenty twenty five, be adopted as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by councillor Broden, second by councillor Abbott, uh, discussion. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, next item is twelve point three sewer user rates bylaw. Uh, motion is that the sewer user rates bylaw, number one, twenty two, nineteen eighty four amendment bylaw, number six forty three, be adopted as presented. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, a motion moved by councillor Broden, second by councillor Tomlin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, next item is the garbage recycling collection bylaw. And the motion is that the garbage recycling collection bylaw, number four, fifty five, twenty thirteen amendment bylaw, number six forty four, twenty twenty five, be adopted as presented. Do we have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Moved by councillor Abbott, second by councillor Broden, discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondence, uh, page one forty five. Councillor Broden, or any councils like to pull any correspondence?
I'm not sure if it's still my my time, but I had a quick look at it.
Is it my time?
Yeah.
Trying to jump ahead or?
No, I've already done it.
If you would like to cover me this.
Councillor Broden, why don't you cover it?
You can, you can owe me one if you like.
Oh, you want, exactly.
Well, there's there's four items. Um, the first two items, I think we should just just receive, um, the proposed finance, development financing amendments, uh, like if 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 there's an impact to Lions Bay, uh, if the staff could could inform council as to what the impact might be there. Uh, there's some provincial amendments that that the city of Burnaby is has highlighted and and I think, and it would be helpful if staff could could have a look at that, which I'm sure they have. Uh, second one, Metro Vancouver, uh, there's a a land use uh notification, which I think is looks to be the sort of standard practice type of thing. Uh, we're, I'm sorry. I'm reading off the correspondence list, yeah. The, it's the one from from Del.
Okay, page one fifty six.
I'm sorry, yeah, one fifty six. Um, so that's regarding land use, so it's more notification, I believe, because it's agricultural land reserve and so on, so. The third item from Mr. Shepsky, uh, council discussed the the proposed trail race uh, ending in Lions Bay and, uh, um, the deputy corporate officer went back to Mr. Shepsky to with with some questions. And he's come back with with what I thought was a very thoughtful letter, which is included in the agenda. Um, he's proposing, um, that that there there be a cross land, not not for the faint of heart, trail race, um, ending in Lions Bay. And and at this point, he'd be looking at twenty twenty six, um, to for for probably August of twenty twenty six in order to have the snow, snowpack and so on, where it needs to be. I think at this point, if we could receive the letter, I'm not sure what more we, shall we encourage? You know, I'm looking for the will of council here. Should we encourage him to come back with us more more information? Um, if if we're, if we're not prepared to support him, I think it would be only fair to let him know early because he's, he's certainly, uh, presented presented us information in good faith. And I think it would be very positive, you know, for the community as a as a destination for for this for this, um, trail running, uh, competition. So I I I would certainly encourage council to support it.
Um, you said you you would support it?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, in the first meeting, I, if you said I would support this, I still think it would be a good thing for us to do as a village. Um, but I'm thinking we might want to get an opinion from our search and rescue people. First, I think that's a mean, I think everyone knows what happened last night. Um, sorry, right before. Um, and just this is not make sure you be creating something that that they're not comfortable being able to man.
Okay, uh, that'd be good to get staff's review as well, but I think that's a good suggestion. Search and rescue, definitely. So, but, um, I I like the idea overall. Got a daughter that has run that house on Crest Trail at least a dozen times and and does these long distance races and I know it's a good community builder, so.
Yeah, I have real concerns about parking, uh, but in his letter, he has identified solutions for that. Basically busing the, uh, um, the, um, competitive.
Okay, any other comments, councillor Tomlin?
No, I think it's all good discussion, search and rescue is great consideration. I he clearly put a lot of thought into our response because it was all positive, so.
Yeah.
I think it would be an exciting event and, yeah, the parking solution seems pretty good one.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other, yeah?
Just another point for council's consideration. So normally with a large event like this, it's common for a municipality to ask the proponent to provide what's referred to as a traffic management plan. So busing is just one of those things, but there may be media, there may be, you know, uh, onlookers that come from all over the place to observe the the finish line, et cetera. So providing a traffic management plan would in theory address all of the soup to nuts concerns around traffic generated by an event like this.
So that's part of the referral staff.
Uh, that'd be good feedback and I'm sure there's some other items that staff would bring up. So, uh, everyone fine with referring to staff and search and rescue?
Excellent, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Councillor Broden?
Okay, uh, the last item was was, uh, a letter to, um, Mr. De- Deckens of the village of Telkwa and, um, his, he was, um, expressing concern that I expressed earlier in the meeting regarding the budget. The, under the economic climate, the the cost of energy, uh, loss of income to some to his residents, uh, concerns about about funding, uh, he was seeking relief from, uh, significant utilities increases. And so I think it's something that we need to continue to be aware of. And I think, you know, a lot of people in Lions Bay feel that Lions Bay is profoundly affluent. And I think that there are, uh, individuals who who are feeling the pinch and have been for some period of time and, um, that we need to be, you know, aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, nothing else. We'll move on to the next item, which is item number fourteen. Uh, new business in the Lions Bay Beach Park Council Design Workshop. Uh, the recommendation is motion that council direct staff to action the next steps with the updated beach park design proposal. Do we have a mover for that? Moved by councillor Tomlin, second, councillor Broden, discussion. Okay, uh, my only discussion is that do we really need this motion as we uh, had previously passed the motion to, uh, direct staff to move forward on the beach park? And that was done over a year ago. So, uh, is it necessary to have a repeated motion?
It could.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, it would, it would be very helpful because what it does is it ties the action to the specific design program. Uh, there's been a considerable adrift away from what was originally submitted. So I think it's a, it's an important hand in glove, complimentary sort of resolution to say, you know, council has, uh, further evolved the design concept to the point where now council is comfortable with it and that is what we're endorsing, proceed based on on the most current version.
Okay, I'll comment again. Once again, we passed a motion to direct you to manage a beach park. Uh, so I still, uh, don't believe it's necessary. I think you were directed to do that over a year ago. Um, but I'll let the, uh, rest of council weigh in.
I'd say whatever it's going to take to get this thing done and moving forward. Motion is what's going to make staff comfortable, then I'm willing to do that. If it's unnecessary, I'm fine taking it and leaving it.
Okay, I agree it's unnecessary, but if it's redundant, I guess it's redundant. We know it, we're going to hold it up for not giving us that something.
Okay, councillor Broden?
Yeah, I think we 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 need to move forward and give the community a clear message that we are moving forward. So I think this motion certainly does that. Um, I I agree that that, uh, that this was staff. Uh, I I did not support. It it's slowly becoming a function of staff, but that was council's decision. So that's where it is. Uh, however, I do feel that, uh, that clarity is is critical and also, um, you know, a positive, um, interaction with with the designer and and builder of this or, you know, vote of confidence. And it would be is very helpful.
Okay, so with that, I'll call the question all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, we'll move to item number fifteen, top of questions in the gallery. Can you please stand up to the podium?
Yeah, I guess not.
No, okay, uh, online? Uh, no hands are raised? No, okay, uh, we'll move to adjourn the open portion of the meeting. Actually, I guess we we take a recess because we're moving back into close. So motion move in the re, uh, take a recess?
So moved.
Okay, opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much to the public. We'll be moving into the closed portion. Uh, and no estimated time of reporting out, but, uh, you can always tune in. So I will take a five minute recess and then we'll resume the closed portion. Thank you.